Allegiance in a moment of silence. Thank you. My first order of business is approval of minutes. Be November 16th, Policy Subcommittee Meeting and November 18th, regular meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Marciano, any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Both, motion carries. Now the executive session meeting, a special meeting on November 30th.
Move passage.
Moved by Mr. Marciano.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Picard, any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. We have no correspondence, no public comments. Moving on to the consent agenda. Mr. Gojo.
I would request a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'd like to speak to Mr. Gojo.
Remove the consent agenda as presented.
So moved. By Mr. Marciano, seconded by.
I'll second it.
Mr. Andriozzi.
Yes, sir.
Any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Both, motion carries. Item number seven, Superintendent's Report, Mr. Gojo.
Thank you, Dr. Pilata. Item A, that, the language for that item was supposed to be updated and revised before it was sent out. So we're just going to briefly update the committee on the distance learning period. First of all, as you know, tomorrow, due to the impending snowstorm, is a distance learning day. The state announced when we began school very late on September 14th, that on snow days, we will be able to shift to distant learning. So it'll be a combination of live learning, live instruction, and instruction given to students to work independently. You hear the terms synchronous and asynchronous, and that's essentially what that means. So because we started the school year so late, the ability to use distance learning days for snow days is very valuable because we can't go beyond July 1st. After that, as you know, we've made a decision based on the statewide data regarding COVID, to shift the entire district to distance learning, starting Monday, December 21st, through Wednesday, December 23rd, and then commencing December 24th through January 3rd, that'll be the winter break. And then we are going to extend the distance learning period for an additional week into January. So January 4th through January 8th will also be distance learning days, and they will run very similar to what we are having tomorrow, which will be a combination of live instruction and assignments posted for students. This will give us the opportunity to deep clean our buildings, as well as ensure that there is no surge after the holidays and travel and whatnot regarding new positive cases or new student, new quarantines for students and staff that would force us to close schools. And then we hope to begin in-person learning once again on Monday, January 11th, though depending on data from the state, that could be subject to change. But right now, that is the goal, to resume learning in person, January 11th, and to manage the rest of the school year as we have since the beginning of school. I really, as you know, have to really commend our building administrators, central office administrators, our teachers and our staff for doing a phenomenal job. As you saw in my report, we've had approximately 90 positive cases and over 500 quarantines and close contacts, and the schools have assumed the responsibility for contact tracing from RIDO. So to be able to do that, keep people safe, and to keep schools open for the most part since September 14th, we're very proud of that. So I just wanted to update the committee and the public on the move to distance learning, which is temporary for about eight school days. Next item on the agenda.
Thank you for that point of information. Does anyone have any questions on that? You don't need to vote on that, Mr. Gojo.
Nope, no, thank you.
Okay, item B.
Item B, we had a settlement proposal for personnel that was discussed in executive session on our meeting on the 30th. So I am recommending that the committee approve that settlement, and I would request a motion to do so.
Move passage.
Motion by Mr. Marciano.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. De Silva. Any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Both.
May.
Motion carries.
Next item on the agenda is the Assistant, next item on the agenda is the Assistant Superintendent Report, Mrs. Seitzinger. I don't, I don't know if she has video, but we can certainly listen to her in terms of what she would like to update the committee and the public on.
Thank you, Mr. Gojo, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, I apologize, I don't know what happened. I will tell you that we had the ADT security company here, and that might have done something with my camera, I'm not sure because we're going back and forth with the system, but I will check that out. But anyway, I want to say good evening to everyone, Chairperson Dr. Pilata and members of the school committee, thank you. Just a few updates. Recently, we had our District ELA and Math Committee Meetings, and we met to review our goals and update our information from last year. And the ELA Committee reviewed our comprehensive literacy teamwork from the elementary portion, including our vision and mission and implementation plans for that, the two elementary pilots, which are going to be beginning in January. And both committees will be reviewing our district's work on prioritizing our content standards by grade level, updating the curriculum scope and sequence, and of course, thinking ahead to RICAS preparation and embedded items from the same in our daily practice. And we also had a District Technology Committee Meeting. I'm going to thank Ralph and his team and everyone who participated in that as well. We agreed through collaboration on our new vision statement. And Lisa Leahy, who's a high school English teacher, did a phenomenal job in reformatting the whole plan. Gina, you're going to love that. And organizing it so that we can really succinctly and clearly look at it as a team and figure out what we want to update and kind of divide it. So we're kind of going to divide it as a team in terms of subcommittees and work on that. So we're excited about that. And that will be on the policies, infrastructure, resources, and professional learning needs. So I attached the draft of that plan there. And then, as you know, we've been continuing our work with distant learners and in-person learners. That's been continuous. And again, I can't say enough about the phenomenal job that our teachers and principals have done in that effort. Very grateful, and also our partners Highlander and New England Base Camp supporting our teachers as well as our instructional coach, Stephanie Capraro, and our Title I coordinator and coach Stephanie Ginn. So I want to thank them publicly for all their hard work, especially throughout our assessment period for screening students in reading and math at the elementary level. It's been quite an undertaking with students who are distance learners and in-person. Just another plug for our colleague Collaboration Corner, check that out. Some really great submissions from our teachers, we're really proud of that. Teachers from all over the district, pre-K to 12, all whether they're regular ed, general ed, and special ed, and just wonderful contributions. Our teacher who just contributed last week, just really proud of their work. We also had the NRU who did present their workshop and it's posted on the website. And I just want to thank them, they did a phenomenal job. Check that out, that's highlighted. It was also highlighted in last week's Valley Breeze, the work that we're doing with NRU in terms of supporting our students with anxiety and post-COVID trauma. And I want to thank Cindy Van Avria, Special Ed Director, for supporting and collaborating me with, in that effort. And so we were interviewed, and that was a nice highlight, so I appreciate that from the breeze. And then next is the high school SAT data. And you can see in the graphs there, I think more, most importantly, I just want to thank Principal McGill and her team there and Mrs. Bronco for her test coordination efforts with that. They do a phenomenal job with that. And you can see overall the progress we've made in the last few years, and that's what you want to see, is steady growth. And that, the progress has gone up in terms of proficiency in the last couple of years from 21% proficiency to this past year at 37%. So seeing those increments of growth is really, really phenomenal, and that's what you want to see. You don't want to see a high amount of growth in it because statistically, it'll come down really quickly. So, and the reading and writing scores went from 45, 5.12%, basically 45% the last couple of years, up to 64% proficiency. That's extremely impressive. And we're also higher in the state, which is, you know, comparatively, you always want to be, you know, comparing yourself to the state average as well. And then finally, we have All-State Band and Vocal Awardees from our high school, which is really remarkable. Five North Province High School band students and four vocal students were awarded at the All-State Competition. And one of our clarinettas students came in second place, and one of our soprano vocalists came in first place. So I wanted to congratulate all of those students, and their, their names are there, so congratulations to all of them. If I could just say their names publicly, I think that's important. Do you mind, Mr. Gojo?
No, please do, thank you, no, please do.
The Junior All-State Band for grades 6 through 9, it's Jeremy Giomarco, Kai Capitamini, Thomas Neosi. And then the Senior All-State Band for grades 10 through 12, John Petita, Kyle Giomarco, Senior All-State Chorus, Cassandra Travis, Maya Banks. And then our Senior All-State Mixed Chorus is Jenna Riley, and then Kayla Sushidi. So I just want to thank them and congratulate them, that's really remarkable, and it's quite an honor for our high school. And then finally, I want to wish all of you and your families a very happy holiday and healthy holiday.
Thank you, Mrs. Seitzinger.
Thank you, Mr. Seitzinger. Yeah, and on behalf of the school committee, we'd just like to congratulate the Junior State Band and the Senior State Band and the Senior Chorus. We're all very proud of you, and thank you for your hard work and dedication. Job well done. And certainly on behalf of the school committee, I'd like to thank everybody involved for the improvement in the SAT scores. We're very proud of that movement upward in averaging to the state and above the state in some areas. So we're certainly moving in the right direction, and we're certainly all proud of everybody that's involved with that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Pilata.
Okay. We have no school committee reports on item 8, item 9. We have no old business, item 10, consider and vote on the purchase of van from the town. The recommendation that went from Mr. Feroli to Mrs. Cassinelli. Questions regarding that? Questions and or concerns?
Do we have to put it up for a vote first, or can we just have a discussion now?
Yeah.
What are we exactly transporting with the van? What's the need?
Why don't we, why don't we make a motion first, and we'll discuss it.
Made.
Motion by Mr. De Silva.
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Marciano, questions, Mrs. Picard.
What do, I mean, if we're transporting things every single day in bun, in abundance, I could see why we would want the van, but if it's a one-time, you, I'm trying to think about, like, I know this year, we had to get the HEPA filters, that's not going to happen every year. So what would be, what would be the main utilization of the van?
Specifically, but yeah, I think Mr. Gojo.
No, go ahead, Lisa.
Oh, I, I don't know specifically what, what exactly they transport all the time. I just know that it was something to do with inclement weather could be a factor.
Right, so I was approached by the town mechanic. He told me that they were putting a van out to market, to sale, and thought that maybe that we could use it, and they would offer it to us at a lower price. So I told him that I would look into it. I, I spoke to Mr. Feroli, and he said that yes, he, that we should be very serious about considering making this purchase. Because what we currently have is a flatbed truck that pretty much is loaned to us by the town for our daily deliveries. And it, it, there's, there's a driver's side and then a passenger seat, and that is it for our deliveries. So I spoke to Paul Olson, our courier, and he said that he would, absolutely would be able to use a van because on days that there is inclement weather, he pretty much cannot deliver what he has to deliver. There's multiple bins on many days of mail and items. Lots of equipment that he does deliver to the schools. And when it rains and when it snows, he's not capable of doing that. Also, we would have, this would be our own van. And so we would have complete disposal and use and access to it at all times and wouldn't necessarily be dependent on the availability through the town. So Mr. Olson was, you know, very much in favor of it and said that he's quite inhibited by the vehicle that he currently has loaned to him by the town. So given all that information, I asked Lisa to check the budget, and she tells me that there is some money in the budget that would pay for this. So I said that I would move the recommendation forward to the school committee.
Joe?
Yes.
Additional questions, Mr. Marciano?
Yeah, my question is, the town mechanic checked this vehicle out, Joe, is that what you said?
Yes.
All right, I know him, he's pretty thorough, so I'm okay with this.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Mr. Andriozzi?
As you know, I'm in the automobile business, and I'd like to know the year, make, and model of the vehicle. What year is it, what model is it, what is it? Does anyone know?
Is Mr. Feroli on the call? He's some. Ralph, do you see Mr. Feroli on the call?
No, I did speak to him earlier. He's in bed pending getting up for the storm.
Okay. So we don't, we don't know, we're just buying a van that someone says is okay. That's pretty much it.
I had, I had Mr. Feroli, I don't know the information off the top of my head, so I don't want to say anything inaccurate, but I asked him, you know, to check on all, on all of that and to find out if it's a suitable piece of equipment. And that's the feedback that I got from him, but I don't know the specifics about the make and the model.
Right.
I'm with Stephen on that one. I mean, I, I don't think I have enough information to make a decision tonight. I'd like to have Mr. Feroli on the call, I recognize the storm and it's unfortunate, but I, I think if we're going to make a big purchase and, and we're going to make sure, one, I want to know specifically what we're transporting, how much mail do we actually have? This is the 21st century, I can't imagine, I mean, we don't even print report cards anymore. I just think, I, I want to know very specifically what these deliveries are going to entail before we make the purchase.
If I may, if I may, I could probably sell you a car for a lot cheaper than what you're paying for this, depending on what it is. To, to handle all your transportation needs, I'm sure I could sell you something. I didn't know you were in the market for something. So with that being said, I need, I need to know the information before I vote on it.
All right, Mr. De Silva has a question.
More of a comment, and I'm over here near Dr. Pilata. So we do have a merger, and we have a merger that has no guidelines because there's nothing written on paper. We have a facilities director who has told multiple superintendents, I work for the mayor. So my concern would be, not only would be the make, model, year, and, and I would defer to Mr. Andriozzi because he definitely knows what he's talking about when it comes to vehicles. But if, if this is a merger and there's a vehicle available, why aren't we just having this vehicle giving to us? Why do we have to come up with $4,500 and then be accused of our finances not in proper order? So I'm not opposed to having this van, but I think I would want, one, more information, and two, I don't know why we have to purchase it.
Totally agree. I agree.
Okay. Any other comments? All right, there was a motion on the floor by Mr. Marciano.
Mr. De Silva and Mr. Marciano.
Seconded by Mr. De Silva. Should be willing to withdraw your motion, Mr. Marciano?
Yeah, I have no problem doing that. We're going to seek further information about this vehicle, is that it?
Yes, correct.
All right.
And Mr. De Silva?
So the motion that is we're going to seek further information, and if the information is agreeable and it can be communicated, we don't have another meeting. But if it can be communicated to us via email, and then we can talk to our car expert, Mr. Andriozzi, and if he's acceptable to it, then of course, I think, again, the price still needs to be negotiated. But then I would be amenable to voting yes for that.
I would think we need to bring it back to the next meeting. I'm not comfortable with all that and a motion, that, that seems very ambiguous.
So the chair, entertain a motion to table this item and have, have request in writing the information that has been discussed. Is everybody comfortable with that?
Yes.
So we need a motion to table this item?
Make a motion to table the item until the next.
Okay, motion by Mrs. Picard, seconded by Mr. De Silva. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Both, motion carries, thank you. Next item, item number 11, approval of bills, chair entertainer motion.
Motion made.
Made by Mr. Silva.
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Marciano, questions?
Discussion.
Mr. De Silva?
So I'm going to question some bills, and Mrs. Cassinelli is aware of that. So I, I'll start, so for everybody on this, I'll mention them by number. So it's batch, one batch, 697, and it's 8 through 14, it's automatic.
Hi Kenny, can I go way back, I'm at a meeting?
Can you hear me?
Go away back.
So its numbers 8 through 14, and it's automatic heating, and it supplies for various schools.
Okay. So those are purchases normally made by Scott when he's doing maintenance and small repairs around the district. Everything is purchased on a purchase order. These particular invoices were for various parts, hoses, adapters, freezer spray, things like that. So I believe it was just two invoices.
Thank you. Numbers 39 through 48 is KCEMI. And I know I ask about Costello's supplies every month, and I know I ask if they're budgeted and how they delineated, how they earmark the school, and what the oversight is.
So they are budgeted by location, I try to split it by location. All of the invoices do come in with the location, either one of the school locations or the central office, because a lot of the purchases are also for there. They are on the master price list for the state, so we didn't have to go out to bid, we could see that. And you wanted some examples?
Yeah.
But I see it's on this particular set, it was bathroom cleaner, glass cleaner, rubber gloves, dust mop pad replacements. There was one that was in there for a floor scrubber repair when they scrub the floors at the schools. I do see that often, those, us break down often or something, but. So that's, that's an example of some of the stuff that they bought this time. It seems like most of the COVID purchases for that type of stuff has calmed down. We must have enough of it finally.
Okay. I know number 50 was Cranston School Tuition. I have to assume that has to do with a PTEC situation, they offer something.
Their career in tech, yes.
One was Crown Heating Supplies for Richie.
So Scott had given me the, I thought I printed it out, but I do remember. He's, they had to install some electric heat in some of the classrooms for the sixth grade wing because of having to have the windows open and box fans going. I guess it, it kind of counteracts the heat that was in there. So they added some additional heating.
Number 60, another tuition to another district, same situation, four students.
Four students, correct, I would have been caught against it.
Right. Number 62 is General Treasure, and it's Davies, and it's upwards of $80,000. And my question would be, you know, for years Davies never took anyone because we paid, and now, it's because they paid, and now that we paid, everybody gets, I'm not decrying Davies, the formula changed. But is this money that's reimbursed by the state, or is it money that's given up as part of our state aid? So is this an example of the state giving us money that we then pay their bills with it?
The only thing I know about the Davies is that we do bill them for our busing every year. We keep track of it throughout the year, and we send them one large invoice at the end of the year for that. We do have 41 students that go there, so I'm not really sure how that. I, I guess they're just like any other career in tech at this point.
Well, well, they're the career in tech, so it's funny, because they're the career in tech that's for this district. And Cranston is, but now we have three kids going to Cranston. So I think the, the water gets muddy because of the PTEC, and I'm sure we have kids coming to us.
We do.
Yeah.
Offhand, I couldn't tell you how many students, but we do, we do bill for quite a few.
Now Trudeau, I imagine, is special education tuition?
Yes, that's for.
And I would think lifespan is the same.
Six students.
Okay.
And they were all separate invoices, that's why there were so many.
Okay, got it. And then numbers 115 to 133 is Lowe's. Now I know we talked about Lowe's every month, and we just want to make sure that, you know, because we have credit cards and municipal doesn't have credit cards. So we want to make sure that our credit cards are supported by POs. And how many cards are being used, and do we know who's using them, and all of that.
There are three cards, Jimmy has one, Scott and Kenny Calisi have one. Most of the purchases are made by Scott and Kenny. Scott's usually making, purchasing things for either the heating or some of the COVID work that's been done. And Kenny seems to be doing a lot of the general repair stuff at, at the school locations.
Now, number 158, 159 is Northeastern Tree for Wayland and North Province High School. I thought that was last month.
Well, those were for some storm damaged trees. These particular invoices, one was for a tree that was overhanging in the playground at Wayland. And the other one was to trim some trees that were overhanging, I guess, a neighbor's yard at the high school. So those were separate.
We do have a whole bunch of backyards there. Now, number 172, Prime Systems Fire and Sprinkler Testing. I imagine that's regulation, I imagine that's a state, and I'm wondering why that firm gets that.
They are on the state, state list also, the master price list, so that is why. Oh, actually, I'm sorry, I'm mistaken on that one. Jimmy, we, I asked him about that, and he said the town went out to bid for that because I think every public building has to be.
Oh, we piggybacked off their bid?
No, we piggybacked off their.
Right. Number 173, it seems like we use a lot of different companies for heating and electric. So this is, 173 is Pro Circuit.
So Pro Circuit went, we went out to bid for a electrician that would charge us by the hour for various work we had around the district, and they, Pro Circuit was who won the bid, was awarded the bid, so. He's doing a lot of our COVID work right now because he's had to add additional electrical outlets to classrooms so that we can use the HEPA filters.
Great. Number 211 is Smithfield Plumbing Supplies, it's about 600 plus of plumbing supplies. I assume these are all backed up with POs?
Yes, we do use POs. Smithfield's one of our better vendors, they're pretty particular about not letting anything go without the PO. That was for, they ordered a bunch of replacement toilet seats for around the district, I guess, for all the student bathrooms.
Cool, okay. And then same thing with Smithfield, number 212, Smithfield School Department, must, similar type thing?
Yeah.
All right. And then I have number 215, out of district transportation is 70,000 plus. So I'm wondering if that is incumbent money or reimbursed money? And is that money that's given to us as part of our state aid?
So part of it is for the private school. So that is, we encumber that as part of our busing expense. That includes special ed, transportation charter, and private school, and displaced students. We do get a credit from the state for the non-public offset. So basically, what we pay to bus the private school kids, we, we get back as a credit from the state.
So that'll be LaSalle, Bayview, wherever.
That's what I think, yeah.
St. Ray's, I'm not sure what our district is anymore.
I'm not, I'm not sure specifically, I don't have the list.
And then 218 through 224 was Amazon. If that's a credit card?
No, Amazon's not a credit card. So we kept the Amazon account open at our level. We're the only ones that can purchase on it, is in, is in the finance department. And we were primarily kept it open to get things from Ralph for technology. Occasionally, we order some other things, but Mary's the only one who has access and can order after the PO is put in an approved.
Okay. I got the Providence Center, I assume that's special ed. Tights Family Service, I suppose that's special education as well. And then 31 and 232, I have Trane HVAC Supplies. And so this is the multiple layers of heating and air conditioning and electric and all that.
So they do order some other parts from there. The larger invoice for 1311 was actually not, not ours, it belongs to the town. So we pulled that out of our bills and sent that to the town.
I'm sorry, would that be the comptroller who found that?
Actually, it was me, because I review all the bills before, before the meeting.
That's excellent. And then obviously, I'm just thinking WB Mason had a whole bunch of stuff.
This is the story with, with Mason. So the beginning of the school year, every, all the secretaries at the schools place these huge. So the beginning of the school year, every, all the secretaries at the schools place these huge orders for all of their teacher supplies and their office supplies. And what happens is things trickle in, it takes several months, sometimes things are backordered. So we have these invoices open waiting to get the, the receipt of all the items on the invoices. So what Mary did this past week is went through to make sure we received everything so we could clear out all of these old invoices at the beginning of the school year. So that's why there's such a large volume, because they're really not ordering anything now.
Yeah.
Besides give me some copy papers, something like that. But that's why, so there, a lot of them are very old, from like September, even August.
Thank you so much and.
You're welcome.
I think the finance department does a great job. And I know sometimes we hear that our finances are not in order, but I would beg to differ. Our finances are superb, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question as well.
Thank you, Mr. De Silva. Further questions, Mr. Andriozzi?
Sure. So getting back to the HVAC, e- every month I ask the same question. So here we are, it's number 216. So we sent out, it looks like Sterling Mechanical, we had to do HVAC supplies for Birchwood Emergency Repair and Leaking, it cost us $2,000. I'm asking this again for the fifth, sixth, 10th time. We have an HVAC person on staff. Why are we constantly sending out for HVAC help? Can somebody explain that to me, please?
We're going to check this particular invoice, but I know on some of the, the boilers that, that he's not allowed to. He's not, on some of the bigger units, I think especially at the high school, that he's not licensed to service those.
Well, this specifically says Birchwood.
Right, that's what I'm checking to see what this one is.
Is he a pipe fitter?
I'm not sure what.
So maybe we should, I mean, I think that would be helpful with Mr. News's question is, I think, what are the required certifications? What licenses do they hold? Because I, I thought based on the postings, they should have had the licenses necessary to do HVAC.
Seems like every month, Gina, we're sending out, we, we're, we're bringing in someone to do HVAC work. I received a phone call from the mayor some time ago questioning this. And he said to me that when it comes to the boilers at the high school, there's only a few people who can handle it. That's fine, okay, I can deal with that. But every other boiler in this, in this system or every other HVAC problem that we have, we have to bring in a profession. And why do we have some, why do we have someone on staff?
And to your point, I, I'd like to know how much we've spent this year total and then how much that salary costs.
Oh God, it's ridiculous. I'm sure it's ridiculous.
You want to make a motion, Steve?
Lisa, excuse me.
Find that particular bill.
Excuse me, Lisa, you, are you, you're what they're asking?
Yes, I am, yep. I'm just trying to find that particular bill because some stuff was, we're having some work done for COVID, so I'm not sure. I'm trying to find this particular bill, it doesn't seem to be in order.
So Lisa, Mr. Casonelli, what we can do is get some information on this particular bill. Get some information along Mr. Andriozzi's questioning about why did we need service from an outside vendor to service that particular boiler? And then to Mr. Picard's question, if we can try to figure out how much we have spent this year on outside. Yep. And then we'll send that out to the, we'll send that out to the entire committee or maybe, or, or, and or report out publicly at the next meeting so that everybody is aware of the information.
Sure. And would it be possible, Joe, to get what, who's licensed for what? So we know specifically what.
Yeah, I mean, I guess we can. I don't know if these employees are hired by the school department or on the town side.
I believe we're paying his salary, portion of his salary.
That, that would, that would make sense, a portion of it. But exactly what, I'm not, I'm not really sure. But yeah, we should be able to get that information.
And, and would Matt, you might, you'd be able to get us the job posting to, to show that? I mean, I would think it would have to be a posting.
He was, he's part of the town, correct, Scott?
Yes.
Yeah, it was for, yeah.
He's paid through us as well.
Right, right. As part of the maintenance, right, allocation with the town, correct.
If you're going to use, touch a boiler, you have to have a pipe fitters license, not just a plumber.
Well, he's an HVAC. So he should be.
No, very, those are very good points. I, I would just, I would just like to add one other concern, I guess. Do we get specification when the work is done on the two new buildings? Whether or not we're being charged for that out of our operational budget? Or should some of those charges have gone against the bond for repairs? Particularly for HVAC in the two new buildings? Do, do we have a separation of that accounting?
Well, if the buildings were, right, we would charge the individual location for the repair, even though it's, it's part of the maintenance budget, but it would get charged by location. But I don't recall seeing too much for the two new schools on any type of repair work for that. I mean, the brand new, we shouldn't have really.
So we're not, we're not being charged any, any amount of money for any of the work that's being done on the two new buildings? Particularly for the punchless items? That should, that's.
Not that I've seen any.
Coming out of the bond.
For that, right.
That should still be coming out of the bond money.
Right, I haven't seen anything from Aguirre.
We don't get grants for that.
Okay, yep.
Okay, any other questions? Uh, yes. Mr. De Silva?
I'm starting to, welcome back, Mrs. I, it seems we're talking about bills. Is there, do you have an update on how we stand with Munis? Because I know Munis is key to the, how we do with bills. And do we have full access to Munis or?
Yeah.
So does the, does the person at the town, whose name escapes me, who's gone in? And so Tom bought property, but they chopped that capital account. Do things like that still able to happen? That whatever you do can get overrun, can get overridden?
Well, I mean, as far as the, most of the stuff that we share with the town and gets posted on our behalf goes into an account like a due to, due from, it's called, either they owe us money or we owe them money. And Lori reconciles that every month. So if she sees something she doesn't recognize, and she reconciles all the due to, due from. So if she's, if there's something in there that she doesn't recognize, she's going to question Maria.
That's that comptroller position that.
Right, yep.
Was necessary and clearly it is.
Yeah, oh yeah. She does a lot of work for, for us.
Absolutely. All right. And going forward, when do you think we're going to stop putting a budget together?
I've started already. All the principals have their, their spreadsheets to start working on their budgets. I've been trying to work on the maintenance budget. I spoke with Scott today on some of their replacement parts for some of these new HEPA machines and things like that. Because we have to budget for that now. And the departments I know are working on, department has a working on their budgets, so. We've been, and we're working, Lori's been working on the salaries spreadsheet to get all the benefits and salaries up to date. So yeah, we've, we've begun.
So how much, how much info do you think you'll be able to put into that budget in terms of? And you don't have to answer me, and I know you're probably working on it. In terms of the merger, the merger that has nothing written about it, no guidelines. So do we have a firm financial, like, what do we pay for the merger and what do we get for the merger?
So it's like the technology portion, Ralph budgets his sal, him and his, his guys' salaries in his budget. And I believe he probably works with Maria to come up with the amount. Because I don't, I don't know individually what they're all paid. But he does factor in an amount for his budget. And Lori can see what we're paying as far as for the maintenance share. So she, we, and it does go up, so we kind of just factor in a little increase in that because, you know, most of the people.
No, no, I totally understand. But my, my, so going forward in terms of crafting a budget which connects to paying bills, you're, you've got some sort of handle on Munis and you've got some sort of handle on. And you're trying to increase the handle on the merger, I would take.
Right, right.
On a monthly basis. All right, well, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Okay, any other questions or concerns on the, on item number 11? Okay, so we have an understanding in terms of what the request was, Lisa?
Yes, yep, I'll get back to everybody on that.
Okay. All right, so there's a motion on the floor to approve the bills.
Yes, we have a motion on second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Nay, I'm a nay.
Okay, Mr. Andriozzi is a nay.
Yes, I am, thank you.
We have one use of property request. Motion to approve. Motion by Mr. Pollak.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. De Silva. Any questions?
One quick question, on the bottom of that, bottom of that application, is someone signature? I assume it's Mr. Feroli. It's, I couldn't read the signature.
Yes, that is his.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions?
I teach elementary school, you can always read my signature.
No additional questions, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. We have no requests to address the committee?
Thank goodness, I did enough of that.
We have no pending business. Chair entertainer motion to adjourn.
Made.
Motion by Mr. De Silva, seconded by.
Pollak.
Mr. Marciano. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Thank you, everyone, and stay safe and Merry Christmas to everyone.
Merry Christmas.
Safe to you.
Merry Christmas, everyone.
Merry Christmas, thank you.
Hi, everyone.
Hi, Ben.